Recording in progress.
All right, we're gonna start our meeting tonight a little after seven, one minute after seven, we're good. I can start on time, but when technology works, it's even better, right? Welcome to those in the audience, welcome to council. We will have an opening ceremony, pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Williamson.
Stand up and meet.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand up and meet, Father. We bow our heads at this time and are grateful for the opportunity of being as a city council for our first city, Harrisville. We ask for that spirit to be with us throughout this night. The decisions that we make will, and the concerns that our public has, will be made aware and we'll be able to weigh them out thoughtfully for the best of interests of the city. We're thankful for the opportunity of freedom and choice. We're thankful for the opportunity of decisions that we have and the blessings that we have because of this great land. I pray that we might do our part to maintain our freedoms and opportunities to give credit not only to thee but also to our leaders and to the public. Say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Williamson. I need to excuse Councilor White, he's out of town. Moving on to item number three, consent items. Approval of meeting minutes from March 12th, 2024 is presented. Council, have you had a chance to look at those minutes? Any changes or corrections? May I have a motion?
I'll make a proposal that we approve the minutes of March 12th, 2024, as presented.
I have a motion and a second on the paper.
Aye.
Any close? Motion carries, thank you. Item number four, business sides. Item A is YCC activities update. I have two of our YCC people here tonight going to present. I've got Jesus Ochoa, is that your name? And Lily Hansen, which one of you want to come up first? Why don't you introduce yourself?
So, I'm Jesus Ochoa, and I'm part of Harrisville U City Council. And this picture is from the Lincoln luncheon that happened at the Monarch. That was a very fun activity to do, because we got to hang out and meet some of the candidates like Blake Moore. And that was a pretty cool experience for me. Because it's my first year in Harrisville U City Council. And it's pretty great. And then another one of the activities is the Easter Hut, where we spread out eggs for the people of Harrisville to enjoy on the holidays. And it's pretty fun. That's it.
Thank you, Jesus.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm Lily Hansen, and I'm also part of the U City Council. So this year, we went to a conference at Utah State and Logan called Future in Focus. And so we had 13 youth and two advisors attend. And at this conference, there were over 200 youth there, all over from Utah. A cool thing here was that it was planned by youth from their own city councils. And so they planned classes, taught them, planned our activities, and it was really cool. So some of the topics we learned about included our core values, networking, service, civil debate, creating habits, and career planning. And so we also had some council time to talk about how we wanted to take what we learned and implement it into our council and into Harrisville as well. And our advisors were able to meet with some other advisors from around the state and receive training and ideas to grow back here. At this conference, we had a formal banquet with a guest speaker. We talked about honesty, kindness, service, and finding our own purpose. We also had a really fun dance and lots of fun games in our general sessions, lots of fun minutes. One of our biggest takeaways as a council this year was that we can use our core values to gain confidence, change our outlook, and improve ourselves. Something I learned from this conference was that I need to keep people in my life to keep my future in focus and surround myself with people who will help me succeed. At the conference, we met lots of new friends who grew closer as a council, and we all look forward to attending this conference next year. We're looking for ways to increase our budget by doing a fundraiser sometime this summer. And we want every youth in our council to attend and learn like we did this year. Many cities had a council member in attendance with them, so for next year, we would like to invite a couple of you or one of you to join us and come experience what we did. Just to talk about a couple of things coming up, we are going to be holding elections for our own mayor and recorder and mayor's staff for our own city council this Thursday. And then in a few weeks, we will be volunteering at Safegood State at the New Bay Mall. Any questions?
Thank you, Lily. I felt like you had a great time. All right, moving on to item B. Some public hearing to receive input from the public for Ann Oregon's proposed ordinance, Harrisville Ordinance 553, which is an ordinance vacating a 10-foot-wide public duty easement on Lot 10 within the Cinnamon Park subdivision. Before we open that public hearing, can you allow me to take that and use a background on it?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. This is technically a formality to relocate an existing public utility easement on this lot. As you can see from this diagram, the original easement runs right down the middle of the property and is prohibiting any type of addition or add-on to the buildable space on the lot. So this ordinance will relocate the, it will vacate the green space where the existing public utility easement is, and it will rededicate that easement towards the lot line, which is the natural position for the public utility easements.
All right, thank you. I would need a motion to open the public hearing, please.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing to receive input for the public order against the proposed ordinance, Harrisville Ordinance 553.
I'll say it again.
I have a motion and a second on the paper.
Aye.
Any close? All right, motion carries. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to come forward, have three minutes to give us your thoughts on this ordinance. And seeing no public, I would like to have a motion to close the public hearing.
Let's go ahead, Luke.
Say it again.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second on the paper.
Aye.
Any close? Motion carries, thank you. Item C, discussion possible action to adopt Harrisville Ordinance 553, which is an ordinance vacating a 10-foot-wide public utility easement on Lot 10 within the Cinnamon Park subdivision. I'll turn the time back over to Jenny Knight.
So as was mentioned earlier before the public hearing, this is just a formality to relocate, vacate the existing, relocate and dedicate the public utility easement. I should mention as well that the proper public notice has been given to the utility providers and opportunities been given for them to comment on this, and no objections were found, utilities were found within this easement. And their staff recommends approval of this ordinance based on those conditions.
So it's not currently being used?
Just curiosity about how it got there.
That question I can't answer, as they researched it, it's a very unique circumstance to, that has created this issue. The lot lines on the original recorded subdivision do not line up with the existing lots. I'll just say that much.
Any other questions or discussion, council? Are we prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Possible action to adopt Harrisville Ordinance 553, an ordinance vacating a 10-foot-wide public utility easement on Lot 10 within Cinnamon Park subdivision.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'm going to need a roll call on this, please. Councilmember Wilkinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, thank you. Item D, discussion possible action to adopt Harrisville Ordinance 550, which is an ordinance approving the business license fee analysis. We have Jill Hunt on Zoom, she is attending a training in St. George, where she's prepared this. Jill, are you prepared to come online?
I am.
All right, we'll turn the time over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. On the memo, it kind of goes through what the study covers, which is the supplies, the time of all the employees after review, the time to have training for the legal aspect, and anything else. The police is one of the biggest factors when they get called out for calls on those specific businesses. So in the study, it goes a little bit more in depth, as you can tell. Thank you, Jenny, or Jack, for bringing those up. As you can tell on that graph, we have a couple of big hitters. We won't say any names, but the goal is to have the business licensing pay for itself. So that way residents don't have to pay for things that they're not responsible for. And the last study that we had was back in 2015. And yeah, the goal is really just to make sure the businesses pay for whatever they use. So for example, one of our big box stores, they have a lot of calls going out. So that's kind of what it covers. There is a big increase, but again, it does cover what is used to help with those business licensing and renewals.
Any questions, council? I see some of the licensing went down. Can you explain kind of that, just based on the analysis?
So the business cost has gone up from the study for a lot of these businesses. They're broken down into specialties, like we have a big box store and things like that. Sorry, I couldn't quite hear the specific question. But we haven't adopted a change in the business license cost for quite a while, so that's why, one, why it's such a big jump. And two, we've had a lot more in-depth of what what it costs to, for training. For example, Jenny is one of the big people as well. She makes sure everything's zoning right for the particular business. So between her time reviewing and making sure she understands both our code and state codes, to make sure that we're following state code as well. Is that what the question was? Sorry, it's a little hard.
Sorry. So are we just trying to change things over to the total calculated study fee of what they recommend? Because I see the side-by-side, the current fee and the study fee.
Oh. I'm calling this quick. So some of them have gone down. For example, the thrift store that has dropped 69%. That's due to, a big thing is the calls. So if a police officer is called out, and how we determine if it's for that business is their specific address. And we take out all of the traffic by the address, so it's specific to the address. So another one that has dropped is the bear license. That's 6%. So some of them have dropped, but some of them have gone up drastically. We have one that's gone up 529% due to the type of calls that are coming from that specific type of business. Not one in particular, the type of business.
I see, okay.
So I know there was a big, a few years ago, a big to-do as far as the state allowing home occupation businesses going in. How does that, how does that apply in here? Because I see that, you know, we have a home occupation business fee. And I'm not against that, obviously, but at the same time, I remember there was a lot of things that we couldn't collect money from them. It had to be an option, and I don't know how that all fits. So, you know, Jill, you talked about we're observing the state laws, but how does this all tie in as far as? It sounds like it ties into calls directly related to police where they have to come to the home, or there's something that's still in it.
So you have a base fee, and that's a great question, thank you, Grover. The base fee covers the bare minimum of what everybody does for a business license.
Right.
And with home occupations, those are a little bit different. Do you have to have a home occupation? The answer is depending on, one, if it's a conditional use, that would be something that would come before planning commission, because that's part of our code. But if they fall into certain things, they don't have to have a business license. They can opt-in if they still want to, if they don't hit any of the requirements that would require them to have a home occupation business license. We do have a couple that do have that because of the company that they work with require it. But I know we do have quite a few that don't. They do a lot of things online, they don't have any clientele coming to the home. So what it comes down to is that is the base amount of what Jenny's time, police time, and my time, the supplies and everything. So I mean, that would be the base cost of the bare minimum of the license.
I remember one of the concerns, and thank you, Jill, that answers a lot of the question. I guess one of the concerns is, we have a lot of concerns as far as home occupations that we know nothing about. And I understand that if they're not doing anything, it brings people to the house and so forth like that. But at the same time, I know there was a big question that was asked as far as like chemicals, things like that that are going on, something that's being used in home occupation that we couldn't control here because we have no idea that they're even having it. Did we, how do we handle something like that? I like what we've got here, I think this is great. But I'm also concerned about what's happening with those things that we aren't aware of, how do we find out? You know, and that could be anything from like a cosmetologist running a side business on their side that doesn't have a license here, and yet they have clientele coming. And I see that, I see those things happening. So I don't know, does that make sense where I'm concerned? But that's, yeah, but that may not have anything to do here, but it is a concern, and I'm just kind of registering it right now.
So that would be under, go ahead, Mayor, go ahead. That would be under our code enforcement, and we're complaint-based. So if somebody complains to us and we find out that somebody's operating a business and we know they have this new clientele, for example, and they don't have a conditional use permit, then we're going to go through the code enforcement process with that business to bring them into compliance. If they are outside of the code, then they're allowed, the state code says we cannot mandate that home occupations have a business license. So we had to repeal that section of our business license code, making people have a business license if they had a home occupation. Now our code states if they have an impact on the community or the city, then we can charge a business license. Some opt-in because they get wholesale pricing for certain items, so they want a business license, so we provide that to them. If they have visiting clientele, they have to have a conditional use permit for that, and then we charge them the business license fee. Is that helpful?
It is, that helps, thank you.
This is something I've seen a need for, suddenly pushed forward for the last several years, and I support it wholeheartedly.
Any other discussion? Jill, anything more to add?
I'm sorry, could you say that one more time?
Sure, is there anything more that you need to add to this? Or would like to add?
No, fine, I'm good.
All right, thank you, Jill, appreciate all your hard work on this. Now, council, is there any discussion on this item? Any more questions, or Jenny, would you like to add? Happy to answer any questions you have. All right. Are you ready to communicate a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt Harrisville Ordinance 550, an ordinance approving the business license fee analysis as just performed.
I'll say it again.
All right, a motion and a second, this is also a roll call vote. Councilor Ruffausse?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, thank you. And again, thank you, Jill, that was a lot of work. Item number E, discussion possible action to adopt Ordinance 551, which is an ordinance adopting a clustered development plan for property located across only 265 Larson Lane, based upon application filed with the city. Jenny Knight?
Thank you, Mayor. So council, this most recent link that Jack sent out this afternoon has the complete master development agreement included in that packet. The background here is in November, an application was received for us to consider proposed development located at approximately 265 Larson Lane. The parcels are identified there, included in the post-development. The application was for an amendment to the MxU's infill overlay map, and it received a negative recommendation at the January 10th Planning Commission meeting and was not forwarded on to the city council. Rather, the developer requested the application be considered for a cluster development plan under Title 11, Chapter 16 of the Harrisville Municipal Code. The project management committee met and reviewed the application during their February meeting, and the planning commission held a public hearing and gave a positive recommendation to approve this ordinance from their March 13th meeting. The analysis of the staff report shows the direct correlation of the cluster development plan with respect to this developed, this proposed development. I'm happy to review those, if you have questions on that analysis and how it reflects against the municipal code, I'm happy to address those. The planning commission did give their positive recommendation subject to the subdivision code. So this is approval of the cluster development plan, but the phases will come back through the normal subdivision application process under Title 12.
So I'm getting some questions on density points, that maybe some of these lots are being manipulated so that they can cram an extra lot or two in. And I'm just kind of, I'd like some clarification to see how our formula stacks up with density points and maybe put some of those issues to rest.
Happy to address that bonus density calculation that staff used. The developer has two amenities included in their proposed development. They have a top lot playground and pickleball courts, which make them eligible for a 25% bonus density calculation. They've also included front porch, front porches on the homes. That will be standard in the subdivision for a 5% bonus density calculation. They have a landscaped entrance that's in the landscaping plan that was sent out for a 5% density bonus. And they have outlined the connectivity using trails, sidewalks, areas that connect the area. For, they've included it as a 5%, our code allows up to a 10%, but they've only calculated that out as a 5%. So through our calculations with the already 15 current zoning would allow for 22.64 units. If we add the totality of the bonus densities together, depending on whether you gave them credit, the full 10% for the trails or 5% for the trails, it's either 45 or 40% increase, which gives them up to 33 lots, but they haven't asked for that, and we have calculated it down to 31. They're proposing 30 lots, new lots.
So actually, I did see that it said 40, and I thought it was going to be corrected to 30, but it does still say 40 on page 46.
So it should have been corrected, and we can make that part of the motion. If it's not corrected, it should be 30. It may have been that we used an existing
Template?
Template. But we can make that part of the motion, that it should be corrected to 30, they're proposing 30.
The maximum. Which page?
46. 2.2.
It's just a typo. All of the conceptual drawings just reflect a 30-unit subdivision, that's what we're proposing.
Then we can certainly have that in the motion, yes.
So how does the loved property factor into this?
So the loved property was acquired as part of the development and proposed to be included in the development.
Is that one of the 31 lots?
It could be considered the 31st lot, but it wouldn't exceed the amount of allowable lots in the bonus density.
Kind of what was done to address the water rate concerns that I saw throughout that?
Sure, so it is uncommon in areas that are undeveloped in the city. We have a lot of ditches and there's still flood irrigation being used. So the easements will be relocated, the water conveyance of the ditches will be rededicated in a space outside the building, buildable areas, and there will be easements recorded on those. And then the engineers will design that, and it will go through an approval process as part of our subdivision process. For, our responsibility is to make sure that the water is provided at the same time and at the same quantity that the downstream users expect to receive.
And is that included in his proposal?
That is not included, that is typically worked out in the subdivision approval process. If even in subdivisions that don't have development agreements, we have to go through the same process to make sure that those downstream users are getting the appropriate water. Typically, by piping irrigation, it provides more water.
And the pickleball court, I'm getting some input that it may be too close to another property, is that within? What are our guidelines?
So the pickleball courts were placed there as an actual, the open space was intentional to be a buffer between the existing residents. The pickleball courts will not be public, they will be private to the people living in the community. And they will not have any lighting or anything to encourage outside use outside of daylight timeframes. So obviously, in the summer, they would probably be used more often later because the sun's out and not quite so often in the winter at all.
So is this, if this, I think it is kind of a conceptual drawing, again, I mean, it's pretty locked in. One of the concerns was the noise the pickleballs make. And where's, yeah, it's a green space, but it also creates a noise of all the people out there, you know, hitting that ball back and forth, and it can be noisy, it can be irritating. The question was, is that the only place it could be located, or could that be adjusted? And this is just a thought, because of concerned citizen, where it's next to their lot. And that's how I wanted to present, because I've been out where there is a lot of pickleballs going on, and it's like ping-pongs going on all over the place. I could see why a citizen I could see why a citizen would be concerned. The lights, I understand, during the several months pickleballs, yeah, it can be nine o'clock at night, you could still be doing that. That's the way it is. And so then I began to wonder, can that be adjusted in so that wouldn't be a direct cause in somebody's backyard or something like that? Where it'd be a noise though, it's not an issue as far as lights. It is noise. And I leave that as a thought, please. That would be something I think should be considered.
So that would need to be addressed here by this body? You would need to make a recommendation that that needs to be relocated or that it's okay where it's at? Just to be clear, that has to be decided during this approval.
Can I address that, Spencer?
Oh, wait, go ahead. If you could provide some insight.
Yeah, could you bring up the conceptual? Thank you, City Council and Mayor. Nice to be with you again. I'll address that for just a minute. We talked about this at the Planning Commission. We are certainly open to relocating that, but I don't know that relocating a few feet. The proposal during the Planning Commission was that we bump it over a little bit. And as soon as we bring this up, I'll show you what the, what the proposal was. I just don't think it's going to have much effect. Any of you who know, who have been around pickleball courts, that sound does travel. And I don't know that moving it a few feet, so yeah, that one's, that one's fine. So this little inset here seems just such a logical place to put it. The proposal in the Planning Commission was that we bump it over here. We're certainly willing to do that. I just, I would just like to propose that it really is not going to make any difference to move it, you know, 30 or 40 feet, you know, inside of the subdivision. Any place we put it in the subdivision is going to impact some residents around it.
Sure.
The other idea was that maybe we could, maybe we could erect a fence. I don't know the fence is going to have a lot of sound control, honestly. It, it's a, it's a fine balance. You're trying to weigh an amenity for the community that the residents are going to love. Pickleball, Utah, I don't know if you, you'll probably know this, but Utah is the number one state of all 50 for pickleball, and it's a very popular sport. So it's a very popular amenity to add to a subdivision. And it does attract people, you know, to consider a subdivision that they might not otherwise consider, which is why we proposed it. And we feel like it would be a nice amenity for the community. I'm not sure that abandoning the pickleball court is a good idea. I think it would, again, be a good benefit for the community. And I think the, the benefit and, and negative, you know, probably outweigh, you know, I, I would think the benefit probably outweighs the negative. We're certainly willing to consider whatever your recommendations are. But again, I, and, and I guess the most obvious is if we shifted it, we could maybe put it over here. But then you still have a resident here now that's impacted more. And I, and again, I don't know that moving it 30 or 40 feet is going to have huge impact.
I have a question for Jenny. What was the the credit, the density credit that we received for putting in the pickleball courts?
25% for, so 25% to have the pickleball courts and the top playground.
Those combined was?
25%.
Thank you.
Have you had other subdivisions that you put the pickleball courts in, and what has been the reaction there?
You know, I think it's always, again, you know, the, the benefits outweigh the, you know, negatives in typical, you know, communities. We are, the mixed subdivision that we're talking about on 1100 North, we also added pickleball courts there. It's a little less impactful there because, you know, you've got the road in front of it. And so we had that option. I just, you know, again, when you win the benefit in figuring out where you put it, it's going to impact somebody, but it's also going to be a great benefit for those who live in the community, so.
Well, I look at that whole parcel of where you've got the green space.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, how big is that? Approximately, just a ballpark.
I would say it's probably, I would say it's probably three quarters of an acre, something like that.
Sure. My point being, I'm listening to what's going on down at the Weber County Fairgrounds at my house. It's way up here.
Are you really?
Oh, yeah. I can hear quite clearly anything that goes across the speakers, because this is a complete flat, level area and sound carries.
Sound does carry.
Yeah.
It really does.
The drain, so I hear, you know, what's going on. So I can appreciate what you're saying. I guess that's what I'm saying. And I don't think, even in a, a three quarters of an acre, you will hear, you'll hear a biblical, one of those patterns.
You'll hear them clearly.
Yeah, the other thing is, was lighting, and we had, originally we're thinking that we would put in lighting so they could play at night. But then they've got the lights going into those, those areas and potentially the sound. And this way, at least at dark, nobody will be found, will be playing.
And we're happy to put up a sign as well if, if you want us to restrict the hours of use. I mean, we're happy to do that. That's kind of a honor kind of a thing, you know? I mean, nobody's going to be policing that, but we could also restrict that.
Can you put some landscaping there, there's bushes or trees that that's?
We could certainly do that.
Sound barriers.
Yeah, we could certainly do that.
I see the actual property owner that affects this walked in. What's the possibility of a sound wall?
I don't know. We'd have to check into that.
There are fences that are cement that, that doesn't look like a sound wall. Looks like a fence.
Say the wood?
You currently could.
Yeah. They're unattractive. You know, it doesn't add to the attractiveness of the community, certainly. But, you know, we could certainly investigate.
I see greenery as more of a density, absorbent sound than I would think a wall, which would be reflective.
I would much prefer to see greenery.
I'm thinking too. We could certainly do trees.
Just swap the retention pond for the pickleball court?
Boes or something.
I'm sorry.
Can you trade places with the?
Uh, we can because of the slope of the lots. Yeah, the drainage goes that way, and so that's, that's where the retention pond really has to go.
Got you.
Uh, we could, we could ask, we could hand out silencers as people come in to play pickleball. But I think that greenery would be, you know, we could put in some fast-growing, you know, those columnar shrubs that grow pretty quickly. We could certainly put in something like that in the landscaping plan. And I think that would be maybe the best of both worlds, you know? You get, you get the attractiveness of, of that amenity, plus some sound deadening, you know, capacity.
And that, you know, and I, I appreciate you considering that. That's
Absolutely.
As we've gotten some things, some feedback, we're just giving that back to you.
Absolutely. Well, and we want to make a community, this is, this is a great community that will, that will benefit the community, but it also has to work with the adjoining neighbors, right? And, and, and bring some, you know, comfort to them as well, so certainly consider that.
Thank you. Well, where it's not open to the public, I'm assuming you're going to have to have it fenced anyway.
There will be, yeah, you always want to fence around a pickleball court so people aren't always chasing balls and to restrict some access.
But it's not the whole green area where you can have a fence off?
The whole green area?
I'm just asking.
No, not the whole green area.
So how are you going to police public coming into the?
If they come in, it's fine.
If they come in.
Yeah. We'll maintain it whether they come or not, you know? So it'll, it'll be maintained. I would like, is it okay for me to address the water issue that you brought up earlier? I would like to address that for just a minute. There is a, there is an impact of a ditch that comes across this part of the property diagonally. And, and we will maintain that. That will be piped. We won't leave it, you know, open surface, but it will be piped underground. We have, we have decided to phase this. I mean, you'll notice in the, in the master development agreement, we are phasing this. The first phase will be this main road coming into the T, so it will be all of these lots here. We purposely put that that way so that we can phase, phase two of the project will be all of the remainder of the lots. And we want to take care of repiping that, not during the irrigation season. And so very likely that what we, what, what our intention is, is to take care of relocating that when irrigation is not in use. And so that would be phase two of the project, and we will take care of that at that time. But we will certainly maintain all of the water rights that are needed during, you know, the watering season.
Do you know the actual diameter of the pipe?
We haven't calculated that yet. What the engineers do is they look at, they look at the, the flow of the ditch and the capacity of the ditch, and then they calculate that accordingly, and that becomes the size of the pipe. They also look at catch basins and things like that that are surrounding it and try to match that.
We went through it over here on, on the Taylor ditch and, and how it ended up, it was fine, but there was always a concern or a safety hazard that the, there's a, the volume won't be adequate compared with whoever puts a pencil to it. Well, that's something we really want to take a close look at.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that our engineers calculate that accordingly, and they do a really good job with that. Any other questions that I can address for you?
Counsel?
I've, I've actually got one that would pertain in this area.
It's not appropriate at all.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, counsel, anything else to discuss? Not?
So I do. We were talking about trees and things like that. Does that have to be into this proposal? As far as landscaping?
Please include that in the motion.
Okay.
Are you ready to consider a motion?
All right.
Okay. Oh, I, would it be something you could table for a minute until we hear from the public who have concerns about it?
It's not a public hearing.
Yes. Well, yes, but, okay. All right. Okay. Any more discussion?
Just trying to work it. Um, I'd like to make the proposal to adopt ordinance 551, an ordinance to adopt a cluster development plan for property located approximately 265 Larson Lane, based on the, on the application filed with the city. And with the inclusion of that, it's around the pickleball court that we put shrubbery or trees to create some type of a barrier to help with, with the noise that would possibly come to that. I understand that there are no lights.
Right. And the clarification of the 30 lots.
And the clarification of the 30 lots. I missed that.
On page 46.
Okay, on page 46.
I have a motion. Can I just ask a question for one second? So there was a public hearing earlier today, is that correct?
At Planning Commission was.
Oh, the Planning Commission was, okay. And can I, I guess I kind of did overlook some of those minutes, so, okay. All right, so we have a motion on the table. Anyone care to?
I'll say.
All right. Have a motion and a second. This is also a roll call vote. Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilhampson?
Yes.
Councilmember Faust?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to item F. This is a discussion possible action to adopt ordinance 552, which is some of you zoning map amendment and master development agreement. Also Jenny Knight.
Thank you, Mayor. Send my microphone, I'll say. Thank you, Mayor. So moving along, this is an application that was actually received in February of 2023 for a mixed-use residential project located approximately 125 West 1100 North. A public hearing to receive public comments was held on March 8th of 2023. And as you're aware, during the mixed-use development negotiations, the mayor forms a mixed-use subcommittee, which includes one council member, one planning commissioner, and the staff along with the development team. And the mixed-use subcommittee has met approximately five times over the last year to negotiate the master development agreement that is presented tonight with the accompanying exhibits. The Planning Commission gave a positive recommendation to approve this ordinance at their March 13th, 2024 meeting. So there is an analysis included in the staff report, again, with the code and the appropriate exhibits that meet those code standards. I'm happy to address any comments or questions that you have regarding that analysis. And the developer is also here, is available to answer questions as well as staff members to address any questions that you might have on this development. And I can pull up the map if you have any question as to where this is located. Sorry, I wasn't here when it came up. Can I just get a little bit of a summary? Yes. So this is located, this is 1100 North that goes through. We completed that a few years ago to connect that from Highway 89 to Washington Boulevard. And this proposed development is this RE15 space right here. So it is a combination as a mixed-use, is a combination of townhomes and patio homes. After receiving the public comments, the developer has made adjustments to the plan to include the patio homes on the east side of the development above the existing homes and has included the townhomes on the west side of the development. The developers also included step roads into the neighboring properties and some open space to allow some amenities for the project.
Any other clarification, counsel?
So I'm assuming this will have an HOA as well, maintaining. Yes, the proposed HOA documents are included in the master development agreement.
How long you been working on this one?
About a year.
Okay.
The other one was longer, 18 months of the other, this is about a year.
Okay. Been around too long, comparing behind this for some reason. It looks like a very good plan.
I will share one thing, the, the staff members of the city have been incredible to work with. I don't know how many phone calls we've had, the five meetings you talked about plus others. It's been quite a collaborative process.
Any questions, counsel?
You say something on the Planning Commission was on this and?
Yes, the thing that they wrote from Planning Commission was on the committee, and originally, Councilmember Loveland sat on this committee until he vacated his, and then Steve Weiss, Steve Weiss filled that position at, I think, one meeting.
Yeah, one or two.
The final, the final meetings he.
So the folks at Northview Fire say everything's kosher as far as getting their units in and out?
Yes, and just like the cluster development plan to mixed-use will have to go through this subdivision plan as well, but the Northview Fire has, has given a letter of, will serve letter essentially for the project.
So just a thought on the outside, Greenwood at one time was looking at some type of an access road into this. How does that fit into this?
So it does, actually. Thank you for bringing that up. Yes, the developers included this western connection. As some of you might be aware, when Greenwood Charter School was put in, UDOT required their access to be listed as a temporary access, and that they would pursue connectivity to 1100 North once the city completed that road and access became available. So this is, the western connection point is available for Greenwood to connect to.
Now, is your property in between this and that?
Their property is this property.
Right next to it?
Right here.
Okay.
Adjacent to this project.
No, I know they have a large building back, but I didn't know where that connected up. Okay.
The developer has met with Greenwood and communicated that their intent to create this road for that connectivity.
I know it was a safety issue for kids in emergencies. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other items of discussion? Questions?
So one of the questions I didn't ask is, as I was reading through that, So, one of the questions I didn't ask is, as I was reading through that, water rights as far as Pine View, is that, you know?
This is eligible for Pine View.
So this one is?
Yes.
And the other one is too?
The other one is not.
Okay, that was my question, because I know there's a borderline and it's a, it's a solid hard line. So this one is eligible. So that's what I was reading, I was confusing the two together, so, thank you. So this one here, you can take the water rights. I remember the last, last issue when this came up, there was a stream or something that was going through the middle of this, or an old stream that?
Two.
Two, oh, J two. And so, that's all been clarified. And I know I had to be engineered to make sure that was correct.
So that will be included in the subdivision process as they work with the state to give a stream alteration permit, FEMA or LOMAR, LOMAR application to mitigate the flood.
Okay, thank you.
And that is called out in the master development agreement.
I don't know.
Okay. Any more questions, or are you prepared to make a motion?
So this is ordinance five fifty-two, you're right?
Correct.
Okay. I'll make the proposal that we just adopt ordinance five fifty-two for the Summit View zoning map amendment to the master development agreement. As.
Present.
Present, thank you, that's the word.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. This is also a roll call vote, counsel. Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Williston?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. All right, moving on to item G, we have a long, big agenda tonight. We are going on to item G, garbage, garbage services update. You have asked for this, counsel, and Jenny is obliged.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is just a kind of interim update from our previous discussion, I believe in February, when we adopted new budget amendments. So since that time, staff has identified that some proposed impacts to the garbage service fees that we want you to take under consideration before we consider whether we need to make adjustments at the end of this fiscal year. Some of those considerations include the employee time. We're estimating between seven to ten hours per month are spent on garbage services by an employee, that's specific to that employee, not counting with the time that our public works might be helping with audits and things like that, but just the specific employee that takes the garbage service request and then files the reports to Bonavista at the end of the month. We have in the past, I believe it's been about two years since we conducted the waste management audit for the number of cans, so we are prepared and willing to conduct another audit, if requested by council, to do the best job we can to count how many cans we have with recycle and garbage cans in each residence. We are, we did reach out to waste management, and we are anticipating a slight increase to the fees. We're hopeful that we'll get that before July so that we can create an appropriate resolution to make any adjustment we need to the fees at that time. And then we appreciate the comments made by councilmember Fawcett regarding the second can, and we have a little information about that second can. As we do receive a discount on the second can, we do not receive a discount on tipping fees from the garbage that's included in that second can. So what is possibly happening is we are not collecting enough fees in the price reduction on the second can to cover those tipping fee costs, which could be causing this recurring deficit in the garbage fund. So we would recommend that council consider increasing that second can to the same price as the first can to eliminate that from happening. Obviously, having a deficit in that fund is, is not acceptable, and we're, these are some considerations we want. We're not proposing anything tonight, we're not proposing that we make any adjustment at this time, we're keeping a very close eye on it, but we wanted to bring that to your attention now so you can give it some thought, give us direction on whether you want us to conduct an audit during May, and we can break some information back to you in June before the fiscal year begins in July. Any questions for us, or comments?
First can cost what? Just remind.
Approximately nineteen dollars. The second can's seven or eight dollars, so it's a significant discount on the second can, but what we weren't accounting for in the past is that the same amount of garbage is collected in that can as the first can. So it's costing the city the same amount in tipping fees to collect that garbage, and we're not covering that cost.
Well, you clarified that, because I was saying, I don't tip my garbage. Sorry, that's exactly what goes to my mind, just wait.
Any other questions? And would you like to recommend she goes ahead, the staff goes ahead with the audit?
I would like to recommend that the audit be.
Yes, or one in agreement.
Okay. I appreciate.
I think you staff will go ahead with that recommendation. Hopefully by the time we have a budget proposed. Item H, discussion possible action to adopt public work standards, Justin Shinsel.
Jack, could we put that whole thing in?
It's in the packet.
Okay, well, if you guys, my chance happened to look at the thousands of pages of text and maps of our public work standards. Due to state code and, and state changes, changes by the state of Utah, we try to go through the public work standards about every five years, update any missed text, update any drawings, such as this year, a big one was actual road section drawings, because states changed to different new minimum road width. Again, we follow in compliance with all of that. The changes, mostly the changes were to our road width sections and our street light sections. We are going away from any wood poles with the overhead light, we want the nicer decorative lights, or if they have the overhang lights, that they're the highway grade lights that that really help the city. There was some cleanup and some texts, there's some, always things that come up with storm water, storm water conveyance, things of that nature. So, again, I'm kind of giving you a broad overview, it's been in the process for the last six months, that myself, a member of my staff, Glenn Gamble, and then Matt Roberts, our city engineer, and his team have poured over these for six months straight, going through every little detail to make sure that not only do we meet the state requirements, but we, we try to uphold the best standards for the city of Harrisville, and make sure that when development does come in, they're held that standard, and it's, it's very easily assessable. We always have our standards on us in our trucks, and can pull them out at a moment's notice with any developer, or anytime anybody excavates an old roadway, that, that everything is put back in the proper place.
Any questions?
Cross the Ts and dot the Is.
One hundred percent.
Thank you for your efforts, keeping that current.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Not, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to adopt public work standards. Let's discuss.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I'll in favor.
Aye.
Any votes? All right, motion carries, thank you. Again, thanks for the Public Works Department for making that. Item I, discussion possible action to adopt the Harrisville City website privacy policy. Jenny and I.
Thank you, Mayor. So, somewhere in the end of January, the mayor received notice from the state auditor's office that to be in compliance with Utah State Code sixty-three dash D dash two dash S one oh three, all designated governmental entities are required to have a properly published privacy policy statement on our website. So over the past weeks, the staff has worked together to create the proposed privacy policy. It's been reviewed by our attorney, and we're proposing we adopt that tonight to be published to meet the state's deadline of April thirtieth.
Any questions?
It's basically just outlines any information we collect on the website, how it's stored, if we share it, which we don't, and gives them a general idea of what, how long we keep it, those types of things.
Any discussion, or are you ready for a motion?
All right, we'd like to propose that we adopt Harrisville ordinance five fifty-four, and then the Harrisville Municipal Court on code.
Give me a second, let's go back to.
Let's try that one more time. These are getting too close, the logs are just, um, discussion and action to, to adopt the Harrisville City website privacy policy.
So what is your motion?
I want a proposal adopted.
Okay, thank you. Also, all right, we have it. A motion and a second, I'll in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries, thank you.
So that provides an emotion.
All right, item J, discussion possible action to adopt Harrisville ordinance five fifty-four, which is an ordinance amending Harrisville Municipal, Municipal Code Section six point one three point zero three zero, Transportation Code for Park. Jenny, one again?
Thank you, Mayor. So we've received some feedback regarding parking along Highway eighty-nine north of Greenwood Charter School, when they have events that blocks the view of oncoming traffic for driveways that are on the north side of the Charter School. So through a partnership with UDOT, we have had our staff reach out to them to see what their requirements and suggestions are. The proposed ordinance that's here before you tonight includes a, an update to our parking ordinance that would prohibit any parking on the roadway, any vehicle parked in areas that would be identified by signage or traffic markings on state roads that we've further identified as Highway eighty-nine, Washington Boulevard, or Wall Avenue. One of the suggestions that UDOT made was that we identify the mile post marker or something like that. We, in our discussion as staff, opted to use this language, because then if we find other areas on Highway eighty-nine, Washington Boulevard, or Wall Avenue that we have issues with parking, we won't have to come back and re-adopt or amend the code, we can just outline those with our partnership with UDOT. So traffic markers can include signage that states no parking, no stopping, standing, there are already some of those signs on the south side of Greenwood Charter School, so they would be put on the north side. Traffic markings also include a road or curb being painted as designated color. So in our code section right before the parking, it designates red as no stopping, standing, or parking, yellow is restricted zone during certain timeframes, blue is a disability parking notification, and white is loading or unloading. So if we identify any of the curbs or the, the roadways with those markings, then it's specific to this ordinance that identifies that they shouldn't be parking there. And then we will work with UDOT to have those signs or the curb painted or, or things like that in that area.
Do we have a problem when we have our fall festival parking on the road?
This will make a difference there, too.
I was gonna say, that's another way to sell something.
Yes.
It's a red flag.
So we have created an opportunity for people to park off-site in the highway, because we don't want people parking, we certainly don't want them crossing the highway, but yes, this would allow us to, to control that a little bit more. And as for, another requirement that goes included in your packet is a memo from Chief Wilson saying that the police department will enforce the traffic marking, markers that are in place.
Okay. Thank you. Any more discussion or questions?
How does the Cement Island factor into that that's coming out?
Oh, I will tell you, this is gonna be later, I will tell you now since you brought it up. We have had, probably in the last six months, we've had a, a couple of meetings with UDOT, and we're gonna have quarterly, and they have been open to the possibility of whatever the city needs, and we're bringing our needs to them. So, recently, and they told us they're doing an overlay, I'm sure you're aware of it, from Larson Lane to twenty-seven hundred north, where they're doing work on Highway eighty-nine. Well, while we were there three months ago, asking if they looked at the possibility of taking that median out, the difficulty anyone that's living on north Harrisville Road has in getting out of the Highway eighty-nine going north. So this last meeting with UDOT a couple of weeks ago, they said that we had approached them at the right time, they were going to remove part of that, so that as you came out, you could hang out into the left, into the middle lane, and then merge. They're also pulling part of that left-hand turn lane median out of there. So it should look a lot different, they engineered it and understand that it was a.
Did they give us back, like, feet number?
Hundred and thirty-two, hundred and thirty-eight, something like that. I remember, I remember where they were. Justin?
So, from the north Harrisville entrance, it was a hundred and thirty-eight feet, essentially lines up, will now line up with the entrance to the Posse Grounds, instead of where it currently is twenty feet.
Yeah, it goes past, like the old stone piece, it goes up to that point.
So it goes up to that point. And then, what they're doing on the left turn pocket into Greenwood is the inside median they are going to take out, they've had too many complaints from the snowfall drivers that it just leaves that pocket that's really hard, and with their trucks being the site there, they can't get in there to get it cleaned out. So that will also be taken out. Part of, as Meg said, as they do the eighty-nine project, there's west, this light out here, West Harrisville out, they're gonna fix the never-ending potholes in that intersection, and, and dig those up and clean up those soft spots, and doing some other big things, ADA ramps, fixing a lot of those.
So this should look a lot different, and this should be done by September. Okay. Kind of excited about that.
When are they starting, Roger?
They have put it out to bid, I'm not aware of when they're gonna start it. Any more discussion, questions? All right, could I have a motion?
Did I get the right number this time?
Let's try it.
I'll make the notion that, the motion that, now you gotta go. I'll make the motion that we adopt Harrisville Ordinance five fifty-four, amending the Harrisville Municipal Code six point one three point zero three zero, for Transportation Code for Parking.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. I'm also needing a roll call vote on this one. Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Williston?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, item K, discussion possible action to surplus police vehicles. Chief Wilson?
So we'll be trying to get rid of, well, we will be getting rid of the two oldest cars are the two that are in the worst shape. We have two twenty-nineteens still, I believe, we're digging rid of one of those, and then twenty-seventeen. The memo says we're gonna look at options through, Ken Garf has a few agencies in other states that are looking for vehicles that are outfitted, so maybe we can recoup some of our costs on some of the equipment that we won't reuse, that's older equipment. They've gone to a newer system and newer equipment in these cars, so none of that will be reused anyways. So this is an option to maybe get some of that money back, besides save some money from stripping the vehicle itself. The other option is to send them to auction and strip them itself.
So what you're asking is to?
To surplus, yes, permission to surplus those two vehicles.
So we send them to auction, we have to strip them essentially?
Yes.
And then we start with, surplus stuff that we don't use, that's outdated?
Yes. So it gets at least five hundred dollars to strip a car, and if we can sell that without stripping it and get some of the money out of the equipment, then another agency can use, it benefits that agency that maybe not has a budget to pay for that, benefits us a little, we get a little money back, so.
Garf has that program?
Um, I think that, well, Ken Garf is who we buy the new cars that they're. I think that, well, Ken Garf is who we buy the new cars through, and he has agencies that reach out and see if he has vehicles, and so it's kind of that go-between where they know we're buying new cars and they have people looking for them. So, he sent the information to a couple of different agencies. So far, I haven't heard anything yet, but I'm hopeful that that will happen.
So, option A versus option B?
Say that again.
Option A versus option B?
Yeah. And option B is just the normal TNT auction that we normally go through.
How much do you use the, I, I, never mind, that's, that's.
Yeah, they vary, I know we're going to, they vary widely, and these two cars have been kept probably past their lifetime. It's normally what we do a five-year rotation and they're, the seventeens pass that, but that one actually has low miles because it was the part-time car, and I think that car only has sixty-seven thousand miles on it. So, it would be a good car to go to another agency.
Okay.
And all the equipment works, it's just not the new stuff that we're using. Is there any other questions? May I?
You have a motion, please.
Make a motion to action to surplus police vehicles.
Posse, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Motion carries. We had a lot of things on that business side of the agenda tonight. Moving on to public comments, this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience, if you have a comment, you're well underway on the podium, express your concerns, state your names, express your concerns. You have three minutes, you do so.
Hi, my name is Paul Davis. I'd actually like to go back to business item E, which is the discussion to adopt the ordinance, let's see, two sixty-five Larson Lane product. I think you guys might be able to shed some light on my questions. But the question I have is, is there, is there any enough or enough parking in that pickleball court to get anybody who would like to come from out of the area, out of the subdivision, to parking? Sometimes I think the parking has been left out. And then whose responsibility would it be to upkeep that pickleball court? I'd hate to see something like that turn into a eyesore, and I don't think that the people in the neighborhood would like that either. Thanks for hearing my comments.
My name's David Conley, and I live at two seventy-five East Larson Lane. It's my property line that you have voted on this pickleball court. I just want you all to know that I'm totally against it, and for other people to make decisions for me, I'm against that, well. I don't think it'll improve the neighborhood. I've lived there for twenty-eight years, and I just need you to know that.
Thank you.
My name is Judy Calvert, and I live at two sixty-nine, I think, two sixty-nine Larson Lane. I've had a very ill husband, as most of you know, for the past three years, and he was a huge racquetball player half of his life and went to pickleball after that. He's been near death for the last three years off and on, and he often takes naps any time during the day, and that pickleball court is right by our bedroom window. And if you don't put lights up, he only played pickleball in an area like that in the summer, and it's light until ten o'clock at night. I know Nate goes to bed at eight o'clock at night. Pickleball is one of the loudest sports I can think of outdoors, and we, I wouldn't hesitate to take legal action if anything happens to him because he can get rest when he needs to. That's been a peaceful backyard where the horses grins, and we can't do anything about that. But that pickleball court is in the wrong place. I don't understand why on the picture it can't go up in another corner because there's no houses there that would border other fields. Why can't it do that? I, I don't understand why it has to be right behind and next to my bedroom windows and There's a huge green spot there. Why can't it not go there? And like I said, I don't mean to be mean about this, but there are some spaces where that could go, where it wouldn't affect anybody. Wouldn't affect anyone. And if the grade isn't right, you can make the grade right for a house. You ought to be able to make your grade right for a pickleball court. Thanks for listening, sorry. Can you consider that, please?
Greg Montgomery, two thirty-one Larson Lane. Two or three quick items to send out tonight, right? I think one important thing is this process has shown the need to define a pending ordinance regulation on cluster subdivisions and revise the standards. Right now, just by becoming a cluster subdivision, the project gets five more units without having to do anything. Normal subdivision, the roads are taken out. Here, the roads are counted as part of the area needed for a house. So, you include the roads that mean a space for a house in counted, in your calculations. The other thing is about impacts to neighbors, about sections of property lines and distances. The project will have their houses ten feet from the parking line of my family members, and that's the way the ordinance is written, so there's nothing to do about it, but it shows that the deficit on existing homes will have an impact that no one else would have with a subdivision going next to them in terms of distance from parking. The second item is concern about not really understanding in the motion addressing adequately the question of the love of law. So, we can say it'll be part of the project, but yet all the standards in the declarations say it's not part of the project. It's not counted as paying maintenance fees, it's not counted as a lot, it's not counted with access to the amenities, and I think there's a real problem saying, we'll count it for its acreage, but we're really not gonna pay any attention that it has any rights because we're isolated and we're calling it a random part of it. And I think that is something that was not actively addressed because there was not a standard saying, okay, we're gonna accept it. We now amend the declarations to cover, this is also included in all aspects, a voting member, of fees and everything else. Either it is or it isn't part of the project, and I think that's something that was not addressed and the motion is not covered. And I think those are, Conley and Judy have expressed their concern about the location of pickleball court. I think one of the things that's important is, under Roberts' rules, you can always consider a motion to reconsider and address these issues that are before you now and address them in a motion that would cover those items that I addressed, then Judy, then Mr. Conley addressed. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, I'm going to move on to Mayor Council follow-up. First, we're gonna have reports from our department heads. Chief Wilson, would you like to go ahead?
Yes. Don't have a ton this month. We have hired a replacement for Officer Clark's position the last last month. He will be starting the very end of May. He's a brand-new officer. We like to hire the new ones, then we can train them the way we like them, so I'm excited for that. This Thursday, we have the Jason Reed Foundation coming to give us a grant award. I don't know the amount that they're giving us, they don't tell us when they come, they just bring a check and kind of give you up what they get during the year between all the agencies in Utah, but we'll be using that to put new foreends on our shotguns that are orange to designate those guns as less than only. So, they'll have an orange forearm and a light that's mounted inside of that, so that's what that money will be going towards. And then the new cars that we ordered are here and getting ready to move up to get equipment put in them. Hopefully, we get those in the next three months. It's hard to get the cars in to get the equipment put in right now. It's been months, it's been a month since we've sent the blue car down to get outfitted for a patrol vehicle, so, and it hasn't been pulled in yet, so hopefully we have those ready by July.
Thank you, Chief. Director Schindler?
Of course.
If anybody's drilled down seven fifty west, we've got putting some foundations and starting to move on utility work here in the next week or two. Part of that, I don't worry having given you an update, we received an update from Representative Moore's office, and we received two million dollars of federal appropriations funding to build the seventeen fifty west drill out to Highway eighty-nine between seven fifty west and Highway eighty-nine. So, we did receive two million dollars from the Federal Appropriations Committee. Also, this past week, we met with WFRC. What we do is a five-year outreach lookout plan and talk about projects that they have funding for in the next five years. Harrisville was one of the lucky ten cities. They received one point five million dollars in WFRC funding for the upgrades for seven fifty west. That funding will not be available till twenty thirty, so it is a five-year plan, but we will start working on that. It will be a phase from West Harrisville Road to the seventeen fifty north. Next year, we will ask for more funding from seventeen fifty to Highway eighty-nine. And we are also right now working to send in our letter of intent for WACOD funding to help subsidize, you know, the new curb gutter sidewalks, storm drain, upgraded utilities on seven fifty west from Highway eighty-nine to seventeen fifty. So, those are the kind of the big things. We're kind of watching the weather, see how the snow comes off the mountain. If here in the next few weeks it kind of rushes, we'll be closing off our storm drain basins and holding back as much water as we possibly can. Lot of good things. We've been out the last two weeks, street sweeping all the streets, and we do that twice a year just to try to keep all the debris and things down. Next week, you might see, if you drive by eighty-nine or seven fifty west, we do have a state permit, and we're gonna loan some old trees on the seven fifty west property that we've torn down and piled up. So, just a lot going on in public works, but we're moving forward and we're pretty happy. I gotta say thank you to Councilmember Christensen on being a big help to get, help us get rid of the nuisance ribbon in one of our, in our streams, and so hopefully here pretty soon we'll have that out of there and take some care of it, so thank you, sir.
We're going to excuse Director Five tonight, the other obligations, and the city mister here, Jenny.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just do a quick update. The Director Five didn't want to thank those that were into attending ribbon cutting ceremony for our new playground equipment. We're excited to see that being used already. So, the only update I have was a request to give a Venlomen views update, development update. So, the staff has met a couple of times with the lender on Venlomen views, who has taken ownership of the project recently, and they have it under contract with a new builder who has interest in developing under the current NDA that will come to this body for an amendment to change ownerships likely next month at your city council meeting in May. I would anticipate seeing that. They are prepared to do the off-site improvements to meet UDOT's timeline for the resurfacing project. There's a large sewer line that needs to be put in. They are prepared to start that, and they are, actually, I already awarded a contract for Phase One, which is Millennium Park. So, we should see movement and improvements going on with the restrooms being built and the parking lot sidewalk installation at the two thousand fourth park.
Wonderful. It's a long time coming. Mayor Council follow-up, Max, do you have anything to share with tonight?
Just wanna thank everybody for the outpouring of love and the flowers.
Yeah. Grover?
I don't have a report on the luncheon because I haven't heard anything back.
I went.
I wasn't.
It was great. Number's down just a little bit, but it was, it was still solid.
Okay, good. And then next month, I know we're gonna plan around Cinco de Mayo, so it'll be kind of fun. You wanna see a saber swing? That means swing a, I think, not swing, swing. We'll have a few, a few things to swing you at.
Thanks for the clarification. Karen?
I would just like to follow a little bit on, we had discussed possibly an email group of some kind or something, so we could get stuff out sooner.
My apologies, we did send out those NDAs knowing the size of those, but I haven't had a chance to check into that, but it's still on my radar, so I'll try and get a report by next month.
Perfect.
I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna say other things as far as, I think our UCity Council did a wonderful job helping out on the eighth. I heard some positive things on that, so.
Need to touch.
Kudos to UCity Council on that, and I know they're trying hard. I gave a challenge to see if they can follow you, and that, so whatever I can do to help.
All right. And I'm gonna follow up with what you said, the Easter egg hunt was fantastic. The weather was not as cooperative as we had hoped, but we still had a great turnout. My family was there, we had a great time. Appreciate all those that helped with that and all the other events in the city, the playground equipment, the dedication tonight, that was, we had a bunch of scissors to cut the ribbon of that. The only other thing is that Utah Lake City's in town is next week. I'll be out of town for that at the end of the weekend, and then I'll be out of town by the end of the month, so make sure you, so. With that, we're going on to item number seven. Would somebody like to make another motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
All right, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we are here tonight. Thank you all.